Wow.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Canton Union Soul District sixty-six Board of Education Regular Meeting, Wednesday, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Please silence your cell phone. Please call the roll.
Ben Bishop.
Here.
Jane Lewis.
Here.
Anne Gersonich.
Here.
Matt Keys. Mike Kula. Brett Perry.
Here.
Jordan Stanley.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight? Okay. Good news items. Recognition of IHSA Boys Bowling State Qualifiers. The coaches here. Are the coaches here?
No.
You're you're gonna do it?
Yeah.
Here, come on.
Okay, um, the 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 two guys that made it to state are here. Um, I do want to recognize Coach Kenny Chalkency and Coach Dave Kennedy for their efforts. Um, it was a fantastic experience for all of us, me included. Um, I went to my our first match in Abingdon that night. And it was just a just a totally different experience walking in there and just seeing so many people deep into the into the crowd watching bowling going on and these guys bowling six games. I thought they were bowling six games. I thought they went bowling a couple ti- a couple of games. But it's like, you know, hey, we get a little tired. Like, okay, yeah, six games you would. But, uh, Zane, if you'll come up, Zane Chalkency was one of our state qualifiers.
Thank you.
Stand over here, sign Garin one picture. Okay, and then, um, and then Dre Kennedy, come on up, please. Dre was twenty-four pins, is that right?
Yeah.
Twenty-four pins shy of making it on to the second day of state. Zane was, um, fifteen pins shy, so very, very close. Big expectations in the future for these two guys and the rest of the team. Um, we had a great time. Do you guys have anything to say? How things went, how your experiences were, um?
I'm saying it's it's great. Um, I'm hoping we can make it as a team next year and bring home a state title.
Very good.
New experience, seeing a bunch of teams, just loud.
Down at state, we were, and moms are here too, uh, it was bleachers and twenty people deep. They're looking through periscopes to see the to see the bowling alley. It was amazing. It was it was really cool. It was really amazing. So thank you, school board, for supporting this, and we had we had a blast, didn't we?
We did.
Very proud of you guys.
How many lanes was that alley? Fif- forty, fifty?
Fifty.
Fif- fifty-some lanes at O'Fallon.
I bet it was loud. Big recognition of Ingersoll Middle School fifth grade team for receiving one class at a time from W E E K and C F Q.
So W E E K came out and, um, recognized the, uh, fifth grade teachers. Amy did a nice job. We, um, had the fifth grade students down in the assembly. Um, told the teachers she needed to talk to the kids. They were in trouble.
Yeah.
Um, kids were very excited about it, and, uh, it was just it was a nice, uh, presentation.
Both very congratulations.
A thousand bucks.
Wow. Yeah, that's wonderful. You haven't spent already, or?
Not absolutely.
Okey dokey. Building reports. Anybody have any other good news for their building? Yes.
I have I have several since the last school board meeting. Um, on January twenty-fourth, we hosted the first ever girls conference wrestling tournament. Um, Canton was dominant and ended up winning the middle line of girls wrestling conference championship. So we have a new traveling trophy, uh, to display at the high school. So very proud of them for that. Um, moving on, that our now that our boys have, um, finished regionals, they were the they are now the three-time regional champions. Um, our we had ten state qualifiers. Uh, the boys left tonight. Um, there there's six boys with two alternates going, and we also have four girls. I do want to mention their names and give them a shout out. At one oh six, Jackson Owens, one twenty, Jake Hardesty, one twenty-six, Dylan Steele. Uh, Jack Jokums is an alternate, a one thirty-eight, so he needs to be ready to wrestle this weekend, too. Uh, one forty-four, Alex Carrier. Um, one fifty-two is Grady Smith. He's an alternate also. One seventy-five, Gus Lidwell, and two eighty-five, Connor Williams. And our, uh, girls advancing, Bella Brown at a hundred pounds, a hundred and twenty pound Chloe Hedges. Our one hundred and thirty pounder, Kenley Smith, was the sectional champion. Um, she's also back-to-back second-place finisher down there at state, so hopefully she can bring home a state title this this year. Um, and then our hundred and forty-five pound pounder, Katie Marble. I do want to mention and give a give a special shout out to her. She is Canton's first ever full four-time state qualifier in boys or girls wrestling. So kudos to Katie and her hard work. Um, on two twenty-five, so, uh, Tu- Tuesday, our boys, since they did win the regional, they will compete in the dual-team sectional at Tulano Unity. They will wrestle Olympia that night. If they win that evening, they will make it to state as a team, which falls next weekend, a week from this weekend. Um, they will join the girls in Bloomington. For girls individual, dual-team state is the same weekend. Boys individual is in Champaign this weekend. Um, I want to give another shout out to the IMS wrestlers. They got second in their invite. They have a couple of big weekends ahead of them. They host the regionals at Ingersoll this weekend. They host the sectional at Ingersoll the following weekend. And our girls basketball team has made it to the regional championship game tomorrow night. They play in Knoxville against Peoria Notre Dame at six o'clock.
Great.
I want to make sure I did not forget anything. That's it. I hope I didn't steal something.
Wonderful. That's glad to hear about it, guys. Really proud of them.
I would like to recognize Kylie. I know she's probably getting tired of this. Um, receiving the IPA Elementary Principal of the Year Award for the entire state, so that's an outstanding accomplishment. Um, so very proud of Kylie and everything that that she does at Lincoln School, and it's very well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you. Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Nobody else is jumping up? Okay. Um, we'll take have our C H S S student report.
Okay, um, so I'll start off, uh, with the twenty twenty-five Girls Ref Wrestling Middle Line Night Conference. Uh, I do know that, um, Brad went over it a little bit, but I guess I'll have a few more details to add. Um, so yes, as he said, it was the first ever, uh, Middle Line Night Conference that the, uh, girls wrestling has ever entered in its history. Um, it can manage to make a victory, um, with among the other teams, uh, in the conference with a staggering one hundred and fifty-four points with, uh, the two seniors, Kenley Smith and Caitlin Marvel, were also given an interview by uh, tw- twenty-five Newsweek and were featured in Jim Matton's Mattson's, uh, coverage of the event for, uh, that day, and also, um, Kenley Smith placed first, and I believe Kate and Marvel also placed first, among other girls placing first. So yes, it was a very, um, outstanding victory, uh, and, um, I believe that the girls have done outstanding in that in regards to that. Um, and also, the twenty twenty-five M- C H S Mr. Little Giant. So on Jan-, uh, February sixth at, uh, seven P M., uh, C H S hosted the annual Mr. Little Giant competition where five senior contestants, Ian Hart, Brody Braden, Josh Buchko, and Louis Fournier and Colin Colin Johnson, uh, showcased their talents. Most performances highlighted, uh, musical abilities with Ian on drums, Josh on the saxophone, Louis on piano and vocals, and Colin producing hip-hop beats, um, which they all did outstanding. Uh, Brody took a different approach, however, and performed a magic, you know, act. He did a little magical show, um, which included pulling a bunny from his hat. And he did a card trick involving, uh, Senior Dimitri Pico. Um, and after much deliberation, uh, Louis Fournier was crowded the c- crowned the twenty twenty-five Mr. Little Giant, and also won Best Talent and Lip Sync Com- um, Companion. Um, title alongside Ian Hart, Josh Buchko was also awarded, uh, Mr. Congelinity, uh, and placed second runner-up while Ian Hart, um, earned first runner-up. Cantonian photo contest, so this is, uh, something that we did during my Cantonian yearbook class. Uh, on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, Miss Stewart's, um, Cantonian class challenged her students to capture a photo that would that would tell a compelling st- story. Students e- eagerly explored the school grounds, searching for the best shot, um, to take their photo. Later that day, they uploaded their best photos and, um, narrowed it down to just the one really, really good photo out of all and compared them to determine the strongest, um, entries. On Friday, twenty, um, January twenty-fourth, uh, Miss Stewart reviewed the submissions and held a class vote with contestants ter- temporarily excused from the class to ensure fairness and, uh, unbiased. Um, and after telling the, uh, votes, she announced the winner. I was the winner. Thank you. I took a photo of the, um, I don't know if you guys know, but the soccer field at the Canton High School, um, athletic grounds where a car crashed into it. That that was my photo, and I added a little story to that. Uh, moving on, graphic design posters. Uh, in this in Miss Anderson's class, uh, in Miss Anderson's graphic design class, uh, students tackled a poster advertisement project for the zoo, Roar and Snore. I don't know if that's a real zoo, but that was one of the themes that we had to do for the poster. Uh, and before designing their posters, students created a list of one hundred animals and practiced painting them for, uh, them in just thirty seconds uh, to focus on simplicity while maintaining recognizable features of these animals. Uh, they then selected their top or best animal design, uh, with the sketch in thirty seconds, um, in five variations, and each and they had to sketch these in, uh, five different drawings. So they would have to pick out three of their best sketches from their painting, which they did in under thirty seconds, and then they would have to then make five sketches for each of the best one. So in total, they had to make five sketches to see, okay, how much how how simple can we make this? Um, and next, students then ref- refined these designs in Adobe Illustrator by just picking one um, out of their best fifteen, uh, and developed a more s- um, stylized and creative approach through their peer critics critiques. Um, they further simplified and perfected their best animal design, which became the focal point of their zoo advertisement posters. To enhance the theme, they incorporated complimentary, uh, typography, ensuring the cohesive and visually engaging final product. Um, Agul- Ag Culture Cultural Project, um, which was conducted by Mister Downs Horticultural Science Class on February sixth, uh, the class began a trans- um, began a project which involved transplanting uh, one thousand three hundred flowers into larger pots. Uh, the flowers, germs, uh, petunias, and ip- I'm sorry if I mispronounce these, uh, impatience, uh, were carefully remo- moved from small paths to, uh, larger pots, um, to accommodate growth. Uh, students were assigned specific roles with planting and adding soil while others removed flowers from their original trays. The students, the project actually spanned from January sixth, I mean, February sixth to February tenth, allowing students to gain hand-on hand-up hands-on experience with horticulture experience and, uh, farming and agricultural. So that is, I conclude my student report. Thank you.
Thank you. That's so good. Okey dokey. Recognition of audience request to address the board? Yes, sir. You have to state your name again.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
My name is Chris Layden. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here before you. I spoke at the last meeting, and I know that that was out of turn. The opportunity to do that. So as I said last time, my wife and I, we reside here in Canton, Illinois. We have three children. And for personal reasons, we have decided to homeschool. But we are big advocates for the allowance of homeschoolers to participate in extracurricular activities. So I just wanted to make a few comments surrounding that. So many of you may know, but homeschoolers, the population of homeschoolers has grown exponentially since the year two thousand. And into the future, it's projected between two and eight percent growth annually. So just wanted a few data points to set us up for if there's a decision that's to be made, because I think that needs to be taken into consideration. So between last meeting and today, I really wanted to gauge the public to see if people were really supportive of this initiative. So went out and procured over a hundred and thirty signatures on a petition of support. And out of a hundred and thirty-seven people that we talked to, only four said no for political reasons, not because that they were against the initiative. So I would say that there is a vast support in the community for this particular initiative. One thing that most people said was, wow, we didn't know that this was not allowed in Canton Swilla Street. So that was an eye-opener for a lot of people. Secondly, the the most the other common comment was, aren't you a taxpayer? We said, yes. So just alone, my wife and I will have a substantial payment for taxes to the school district. So I would say, from a taxation perspective, I appreciate and encourage representation. Now, not here to start Boston Tea Party, okay, but what I will say is a few encouraging words. And that is, if you're gonna make a decision, if you're gonna come together, maybe form a committee or talk about this, please, please get to know the homeschooling population. Talk to a few of them. Get to know some kids and the parents, invite them in to the decision-making process. I think that would be powerful. And secondly, I think that I think that it is important to understand that the I E S A and the I H S A minimum requirement of attending one class, that makes it so it's not too onerous on homeschooling families. Because homeschoolers will still want to homeschool their kids. So if you make a decision, I would say, please take that into consideration. One or two classes max would be would be plenty to allow homeschooling families to continue to homeschool. Lastly, I will say this. When I was perusing the website, I noticed that you all have core values that you cherish, right? There were things such as creative thinking and innovation and collaboration, and I respect those greatly. We have core values at my workplace, at my previous workplace. We have core va- values in our family. And we all know the core values. Just words on a page, just words on a screen are just words. The power is in their action. So I would encourage that the core values of innovation, creativity, and collaboration especially, are put into action for this initiative. And I would say, please, do it for the kids. Do it for better programs. And do it for a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there will be a discussion item tonight on the board agenda. Did you see it, Mr. Lay?
Yep.
Yep, okay. Yes, sir.
Tonight, I Grant Stevenson, I was actually gonna talk about the same topic. Uh, I watched the board meeting last, uh, it was on the board agenda, and I kind of got excited when I first saw that it was. And I thought, I saw Brad and Chris talk, and I, again, thought maybe, not that my opinion makes any difference, but it just comes from a completely different perspective. I grew up in Canton. My I've got three kids who are in the district. I have no intent of ever homeschooling, even though I am, which I should I should have told you guys. Thank you long ago for allowing me to be on the lead this year, but, uh, even with that, I have no intention of ever homeschooling my kids. I love this district and what they've done for me and what they're doing for my kids. Um, but I just thought, because I am very much in favor of this and kind of where that comes from. Uh, after I got out of coaching here in the district, I've been coaching a lot at the Park District and the Y M C A. And to be honest, I had no idea how many families homeschool in Canton. I don't remember the last time that I've had a team where there's not one or two families and kids that have been on that program. And so the the first thing that really stood out to me is, and again, I can only speak from my experience, every one of those families, the kids that are on that team are the Every one of those families, the kids that are on that team are the positive peer interactions that I want my kids to be around. Some of my sons specifically and daughter have become really, really close friends with some individuals that homeschool. Um and so, you know, selfishly, it'd be awesome if they got to play, but. But even though as a teacher and as a coach, I recognize how powerful positive supports are. There are so many positive kids in this district, but I also recognize that it, there's a lot more than I realized that are homeschooling, that that wanna be part of this. Um you know, and even in that, I always wondered when I first started, like at that time, you know, and I was teaching, I was like, is there gonna be this weird conflict if I'm teaching and you're homeschooling? There was never an us versus that, I never had a negative interaction with any of the parents, it was uh, they respected the district. I respected them for what they did and, you know, and we still had that mutual agreeance. The second thing that I kinda stood out too is, again, as I think everybody in here, I don't need to repeat this. I'm very prideful of Canton, this is my hometown, when my wife and I got married, this is where we wanted our kids to be raised. Um and I've always felt like the district was probably that centerpiece that like every, you know, it kinda connected so many people, I remember we were playing football, you know? We'd have thousands of people at our games back in early thousands and they weren't all parents, they were community members, you know, people that were just part of this community. And so, you know, I guess when there's people and you two specifically of, you know, Brad is a professor at Bradley. You could just as easily take your family to Morton or Metamora, but you choose to raise your kids in this town. And that, you're like me in that sense, this town means something, right? I respect that you just choose to, you know, educate your kids differently. And so even if that there's just that small part of, hey, we still wanna be part of the athletic program, which. I think still has a lot of value, it has always had a lot of value to me. To me, it just seems like a win for the the homeschool families, but then also for all of the kids in the district that are participating in those extracurriculars, so. Um that's one, and then this is like the point that even I don't hit on that much. As a sports guy that enjoys that, you know, I don't have all the data, Brad, you'd have it, but I. From an observational standpoint, it seems like numbers are down in certain sports, not all of them, but numbers are down, and it seems like if this is something that the state allows. In some districts, again, I don't have all the details. If there's even a handful of kids, you know, one or two kids can make a substantial difference in the success of a sports program, so if it's allowed, that's the one thing also that I just see as a. As a positive for the athletic department. And then the last point, and sorry, I'll be done talking, uh when I was in middle school, I don't know what the policy was back in the nineties, but uh I played trombone and there was a. Homeschooling was not normal back in the nineties and the district for whatever, it was allowed back then, I I don't know how that worked, but anyway, there was a family. And uh this, the boy, he only came to middle school to play in the band, and I just was lucky to sit by him. In the three years in middle school, we became really close friends, he actually ended up coming back into the high school. And we became, he was one of my best friends all through high school, we played football together. And that started because at least back then, for that one thing, the district allowed it and it was a positive interaction, so again. I enjoyed hearing the different perspectives and the conversations, so I thought maybe hearing from somebody who wasn't. And doesn't have any intentions of homeschooling, just a different perspective on why I felt like it's a positive thing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Stay around for the discussion, okay? Alrighty, um anybody else want to address this? I don't wanna like pass by and and. Be the person that said, oh, you you're out of turn, I'm so sorry. What do you teach at Bradley?
Teach in the marketing department, so I teach our intro to business course, our first was a marketing course, I teach it both domestically and in our study abroad program. Then I teach our sales classes over there, I coach our sales team with the number one ranked sales team in the nation.
That's impressive. Okay, um we're going to move to the consent agenda, anybody, everybody? This will be eight A through, my goodness, eleven C. Do you have any questions regarding this consent agenda? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? Please call the roll.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Anne Gersonich?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
I skipped two things, he's not here.
Brent Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Okay, no, I did, I got it, yeah, alrighty, I'm sorry, um I thought I had skipped it. It's been a bad day for me.
You want me to vote?
Yeah, you wanna come up here and do this?
No.
Okay.
Are you kidding me?
It has just not been a great day. I shouldn't even tell people I have that. Okay, are we ready, are we done? Did Ben vote? Okay, sorry, Ted. He's so proud of me, I'm telling you, just crazy old woman. Okay, action items, consider approval of employment contract for Tad Durancy Superintendent of District. That's why he's being nice, District Executive July first two thousand twenty four through June thirtieth two thousand twenty nine. Here a motion?
I shall move.
I second.
Please call the roll.
Anne Gersonich?
Yes.
Brent Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes. Alrighty, consider approval of public school calendar for, gosh, twenty five, twenty six.
Here already, so presented it last month, there is one minor change, uh Veterans Day was down as being a not in, not in attendance day. I dismiss that typically, we do have school on that day and um have activities at schools for the veterans, so that change has been made. And it just gets us out of school one day earlier, so.
Unless we have snow days. This has been an interesting year for those. Do I have a motion to approve the uh school calendar for twenty five, twenty six?
So move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brent Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Anne Gersonich?
Yes.
Consider approval of a three year lease for eight. Twenty twenty five seventy one passenger buses and one two thousand twenty five forty seven passenger lift bus.
So this was from discussion last time, we have six buses coming off lease, we're just renewing that lease, replacing them, but these buses now have air conditioning, which is great. And then we have three older buses we like to get rid of and replace those with three new lease buses, and those have air conditioning. So now we'll have a total of nine buses with air conditioning, and one of those will be the uh lift bus to help um the our s- our special population students.
Great, I'll entertain a motion to accept the bid for the three year. Please call the roll.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Anne Gersonich?
Yes.
And Brent Perry?
Yes.
I just wanna say, everybody should have experienced no air conditioning on a bus. Okay.
I never knew they put it in.
Consider approval of fuel bid.
So uh this is our yearly fuel bid, um so we uh did the bid on February fourth, opened it up, we had two companies. Put in their bids and they alternate every single year, Hair Petroleum gets it one year, West Central FS, Hair Petroleum, and then now we have West Central FS did the lowest bid. So I'm recommending them as our supplier from March first all the way up to the end of February of next year.
Any questions, guys? Entertain a motion to accept the approval of the fuel bid. Please call the roll.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Anne Gersonich?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
You can answer for Matt too. He's probably somewhere in the air over, who knows where. Uh District sixty six metrics report, you have any questions about it, guys? Okay, discussion items, one. Discuss, discussion of seating of board members after election.
Yeah, so the election is April first, um after the election, we have forty days to seat the new board members. Um so my question for the board is April, we can either seat the new board members at the April board meeting before the meeting like we did two years ago. Or we can have the meeting with the current board and then schedule a special board meeting to seat those members. Um which would include the swearing in and the reorganizational meeting, so just looking for guidance on how you'd like to proceed with that, so we can plan appropriately.
What days?
I'm all for the same.
Same.
Board meeting, a regular, yeah. Speaking for myself. Like it was the last time, right?
Yeah, it'd be like.
The last time, oh, it fell after. Days fell after the graduation, so.
Yeah, the election's a little bit earlier this year, um we actually did it on the fortieth day to get it out that far last time. Um the fortieth day this year would be May twelve, more beans on May nineteenth, so.
We'll just go back to March. Let's just go back to next year.
Do you have crystal ball?
I'm telling you, it's not, not my day, gosh, yeah, so that'll work, just do it that day.
What day you gonna do that?
The next board meeting after April.
The April board meeting, you counting down?
Counting the dates.
Two more and you're out.
He's not telling the truth.
I'm not counting my.
He's not telling the truth, he'll probably be sitting out there making faces at. Okay, um discussion of district handbook meeting.
Yeah, so each year we have a district handbook meeting, the principals have gotten me the recommended handbooks for um elementary, middle school, high school. Uh typically, we have one board member sit on that district wide handbook meeting, um one school board member, administrators. And some parents sit in on that and just looking for a volunteer to participate.
I'll do it, I don't do anything extra. I'll do it, they're on all these committees, I'll do the extra.
I did it for three years, you can do this.
I've been on it before.
And I'll tell you what.
I'll do it on this side.
I'm gonna pass you.
Yay.
So I'll, I'll get ahold of you and work on a date and then I'll get that disseminated out.
Okay, you did a big red bid too, sweet.
Ben will do it.
Ben's done it too.
Two months here.
Thank you so much for doing that, I appreciate it. Okay, we're moving on to uh discussion of homeschool students participating in athletics and extracurricular.
Yeah, so after last month, wanted to get it on the agenda, um and kinda see where the board would like to go with that, so. Jane, you got some thoughts?
I do, I have some thoughts. What I would like to do is that it's a bigger question for us than just sports. Because when we start meeting to extracurricular, that would mean dances and. And other activities that go on, especially at the high school and middle school. So we want to ha- form a committee, and I talked to Mike Krulak. And he will be the board representative for that committee. I'll pop in and in and out every, whenever I'm here. And we want to discuss all the parameters and what we, so everybody knows what we have to do specifically. Like if your child is par- participating in in sports. Their names drawn for drug testing, whoever's, they have to be there now. I mean, they have, parents will have to drop everything and come in and have them drug tested, you know, just so everybody knows kind of what's going on. And what your idea is, I'm assuming you guys will be on the committee, right? As parents? Okay, good. Grant, you can come too. I never thought you'd just talk. And he doesn't know it yet either, but I'm asking him to be on it, cause he's like the big chief of of athletics. And um I'll ask, we'll ask an administrator to be on it also, that it deals with all the other extracurriculars, like has dances and whatnot. And we'll just sit down and make discussions and see all the activities, Julie, I'm gonna. Look for you too, um what, cause we, if we do this, it has to be smooth. And we have to anticipate all the things that could happen to do that. You know, I'll be truthful, I said no last time, I've told all you guys this, I said no, but I sat down and had a long talk to myself. And I've started reading about it, and I think there's some validity in this, because A, you are taxpayers. And B, um as long as. I think all children should be productive members of their community and their school, and you are in the district. But that's not my decision only to make. And so I feel the best way to do it would be have a committee and have you guys meet. Like probably every other week from the beginning, so we can kinda get it done before the end of the school year to know where we're headed. How many kids will be joining us and what you think about um at what extracurriculars or if you just don't want to do extracurriculars. Those kinds of things, and then also, don't, we report weekly um grade averages and all that stuff, so that's another thing that. We'd have to work on how your reporting's going to be. I do have, which. Chris was great, he got it to me really, really fast, this is their their scope, the sequence of their of their curriculum. And I'll get copies made for everybody that's gonna be on the board, you were really timely, you were quick, I'm proud.
And I, I actually have copies with.
Okay, oh, do you? Good, thank you, see, he's always anticipating me. But um. It's a change and we're stepping out of our, of our circle, and um when I went to school, there was, I don't think any kids that were homeschooled. I can't even, of course, that was back in the. Dark ages, so, you know, so um. I think the only way that we can do this and make a. A decision that's going to work for for us and you and do everything is to have a committee and see what kind of. You might decide that we do too much stuff and you don't wanna do the drug, you don't like the drug testing part, or you don't like one or the other parts, but. Just so that we're all informed about what's going on, and then the board will have to vote on the final. And I'm just one vote and everybody else is just one vote, so. Do you have any questions or anything you want, you guys want?
Statement of great appreciation for continuing down this path to a potential solution.
Thank you, we appreciate it, you've got a good board here, they're um. Right now, I think we have three educators and then our, your gas, right, he's our Ameren gas guy, a doctor. And Mike is retired, he is farming still, isn't he? And Matt Keys, he's somewhere in an airplane over who knows where for Caterpillar, you have no idea where he is, um so um. We wanna make the right decision, okay, and um. Like I said, I'm only one vote, so we'll see how it goes, and if you, uh if you guys wanna get ahold of any of us. I can give you my phone number and then I can relay questions to people or whatever, I don't, I'm pretty much accessible since I'm retired. And um we'll go from there and hope that we all work out, is that okay? Okay.
If you don't mind, if I get your contact information before you leave tonight, that'd be great.
Uh emails, bank accounts. We, we're going to take and have start, Mike said he would do it, and we're gonna discuss doing the, we're gonna start the committee, you wanna be on the committee too?
I could be.
Okay.
Put me down as an alternate.
Okay, put Ben down as an alternate, these are, Ben was the man that hired me into school teaching, just last year. I was the alternate, no, okay. Alrighty, thank you so much.
Check my days.
Check your days, we'll, we'll get this all set up, it'll take a while, we probably won't have it set up until mid we, mid next month or something. Cause it'll take, we don't move fast, schools don't move fast. Okay, everything fine? Okay, discussion of naming the court at Alice Ingersoll Gym.
Yeah, so.
Jane Lewis?
We were, had a uh community member reach out about possibly naming the court at Alice Ingersoll Gym, I believe, all board members. Um also received that email. Talked to Jane about it and thought it'd be good to have a discussion here, so their recommendation is to name the court after Dave Downey. Uh for those of you that aren't aware who Dave Downey is, um he is a graduate of the class of nineteen sixty. Um before Kevin Rhodes for, until that time, he was the leading scorer in Canton basketball history. We gotta look through my notes here, he had state honors in both his junior and senior years. He then went on to play for the University of Illinois to earn all Big Ten honors, the Big Ten Medal of Honor. And was a member of the NCAA All Regional Team in nineteen sixty three. Uh he was also selected as the Illinois MVP by his teammates for three consecutive years. Um and still holds the single game scoring record for U of I with fifty three points uh in a game against Indiana, which still stands today. In nineteen seventy three, he was inducted into the Illinois Basketball Hall of Fame, Coaches Association Hall of Fame. In two thousand and four, elected to the Midline I, or sorry, to the Line I Men's Basketball All Century Team. And in two thousand and eight, his jersey was hung on the rafters at the State Farm Center. Um in two thousand and eighteen, he was also inducted into the Illinois Athletics Hall of Fame, so. That's, that's kind of a sports history of it, um so just something for discussion and potentially to consider. Um Brad has done a little bit of research on this, if it's, if you choose to do this, kinda how to handle it. Of course, we could put up plaques and signs and those types of things, um and we do have a donor that's that's offered to help with those. Um most places when they name a court, they put something on the court itself, which would involve refinishing the floor. Um we're estimating to to refinish that floor, Brad made some contacts, it'd probably be about seventy-five thousand dollars. Um in terms of what would be on the floor, there's, you know, multiple options. One that that we think looks really nice is when the person actually has their signature on the floor and 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 their name under it or something along those lines, but. I like to say something brought to us by the community and just wanted to bring it for discussion.
I wasn't a basketball player, nor did I pretend to be one. But when I saw this on the discussion, he was the very first name that I'd thought of. And I'm sure if Kevin Rhodes were sitting in my seat, he would probably say the same. So I mean, if if you're gonna name the court. I think that would be probably the only name that I could approve.
Scared the hell out of me when I was in the eighth grade. I, I was really tall, five-six. Dave Downey was nine foot tall, I weighed four hundred and sixty-eight pounds. Yeah, I was, I thi- I think it's very good idea, very good idea.
And so it's made clear, we're not renaming Alice Ingersoll.
No, 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 just the court.
Cause I know somebody's gonna be like, wait a minute. It'll be Alice Ingersoll, it'll be Dave Downey Court or whoever inside of Alice Ingersoll.
Yeah, yeah, we're just like the football stadium, that's Memorial Stadium and right by, famous stock field.
I think, I mean. I think it's a good idea. And it's a great way to honor him. Cause I mean, you just read, I mean, that's a heck of a resume for somebody.
Not old as he now.
Had a nice record on the paper and I have, you know, first thing I did is scan that list to make sure he was there. I figured he would have a problem. You ever played against him, he was, he was just unbelievable.
If we decide to do this, we should contact him.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I think it sounds like a great idea. You know, you have a great person from Canton that got a lot and. What do you think, Doc?
Sure.
And? Yeah, I think the other two would probably be okay, cause um Crew talked to me about it, he's okay.
And the next question I'll pose to the board is, do we wanna name it and do signage or do we wanna? Look in more into resurfacing the floor to get it on the floor as well.
When's the floor due to be resurfaced?
And and talking to the company that services our floors every year, he said you have one more sanding on the floor. Once you start to see nail holes. And we're not seeing nail holes yet.
Would that, would that give us, I mean, could we, could we do that? Knowing we've got one more sandy, do it after?
He, you'd have to take everything down and then repaint everything, but you have, you have the the hardwood there to do that apparently.
So then, how long do you think we had that floor will be? There. Yeah, do you know the last time it was done?
It was, it it was prior to my tenure and Mr. Grisman's tenure.
So it'll be, that's due in the next few years.
Be sanded, so if we'd have it done now, it'd be.
I would guess somewhere probably early two thousands, it seems like mid nineties, the court. And I'm going based on the, the team benches used to be on the opposite side. I believe mid to late nineties, it was still that way, so I'm gonna say somewhere around two thousand.
So it's been twenty-four years. That's when they changed the whole floor.
Yeah, they actually, we, they shifted the floor over um towards what I'll call the home bleacher side, um those, the the bleachers that are on the locker room side. Um and then moved the benches to where they are now.
So what did they do to the floor?
Because that John was at the high school when that happened, cause Leonard was the president when that happened, it all got switched over.
Leonard was the president?
Two thousand thirteen, I remember talking about it.
No, I'm talking about the fold down, cause it has to go fold down, doesn't it, to do the signature? It has to go fully down to the, I think it, wouldn't it have to be sanded completely, the whole floor to do the signature, so. What's it cost to redo it every year? Cause we do it, don't we, every year, something to it.
E- each floor varies by size, it's. Fifteen hundred roughly per floor, I think Alice is more like twenty-one or twenty-two. But like, in general, your average floor is about fif- it's about fifteen, sixteen, I believe, I have that.
You'd have to.
That's just the clear coat, that's no painting or anything, that's literal, that's just kinda scuffing it and putting a new top coat.
Would you, would you have to remove the the Downey signature and anything else? Or can you leave that? And then still put a finish on top of that?
According to, they take it all down and then repaint everything again. And then put the seal or what, top coat on after that.
Yeah, so you're paying that full, full price? Every, every time?
No, not every time. That would be the first time and then after that, we'd have it on a similar, um the same program, we have the one now where every year, just the the top coat is refinished.
So you're not gonna have to redo that?
So about how? How long would the signature last on there? I mean, before it would have to be replaced. Till the floor's replaced, okay.
Till it had to be sanded down again, so.
Okay.
Well, can we get a better estimate of how long before we have to re-sand? And I, if we're gonna do it, I say go on the floor, I I mean, signs are great, but.
I agree with you.
On the floor, it's where it should be.
When people walk in, they see it.
But we're close to a refinish anyway.
And it's, I think that's, it's kinda hard to tell because really it's when that starts chipping and peeling is, that's when you're really like, alright, we're we're within a few years here. And right now, I don't believe we have any spots like that and we can get an estimate on it, but it, what it usually is, but.
I mean, you say to spend that kinda money and then in four years, you gotta redo it again.
Well, if we, if we do this, you know, once, once we, you know, if this is done and done once, it should be good for another twenty, thirty years.
Uh we won't care by that point, that's what you're saying.
I'd be a hundred and one, I don't think so.
You never know. I think, I think it needs to be on the floor, I think if you're gonna recognize the guy who's impressive as hell, yeah, it needs to be on the floor. And I like the the, you know, David Downey Court, I, that's the way to go, but yeah.
Does this company do the painting too? Or do we have to find somebody to do that?
Uh yeah, this company does, they do the United Center and they do several places. Um I do have quotes now, if you want, if you'd like. So to do our top surfaces, so our, our wood gyms, our competition gyms get it every year. Our non-competition gyms are every other year, so uh this past year. Um South Gym was twenty-five ninety-five, Alice was twenty-six and Ingersoll Middle School was twelve eighty. Previous year, we did Westview, Eastview and North Gym, North Gym sixteen ninety-three, Eastview and Westview, Westview were twelve fifty-one. To do the top surface. And that's an annual, we just, as soon as they're done, I schedule them for next year, right around fourth of July, and they just do them all in two days. And then they sit for ten days and we're back on them again.
And he gave you a quote of seventy-five thousand to do it all the way down to the bottom?
He said approximately. But yes, he said.
I have a better approximate number.
He said for discussion purposes, seventy-five thousand.
Let's say get an actual quote and then.
He's great to work with, he'll come down, check it out.
Will he give us? Options? I mean.
The way it looks?
Yeah, like when we read, had to redo Ingersoll's floor, then they had drawings of it and we can make changes and.
Okay, let's look at it. Go for it, go for looking.
So yes, on on naming the court. So we're okay if we go and contact Mr. Downey and all those things and we'll work on the floor side of it. Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. I think we're done with that, information, freedom of information requests from Peoria Standard.
Yeah, so received another FOIA request from Peoria Standard. Um they were asking for all emails in the last twelve months containing the keywords Lucy Cockens or units of study. Um Don pulled that out of, out of our database and that was provided.
Who's that?
Who's Lucy Cockens? Um that's a reading, reading program.
I haven't taught that for years, okay. Who is Peoria Standard, by the way?
Um it's a online, um I'll call it a news organization. Um there's a lot of questions about who runs it and potentially it's uh managed through AI. When you look at the articles, there's no names attached to it.
Great. Freedom of information requests from the data branch research team, same house, same address.
Um the, this uh, this group has done FOIA requests before for similar information. Um this time, they were asking for information on purchase orders from January twenty twenty to the present. Um Laura did a great job pointing that information and that information was supplied to them.
Thank you. Update on progress of school improvement plans enclosure, any questions, guys?
So there, um it's going to be brief presentations from each of the buildings uh to update you. Um there is a slide deck, Jeff could pull it up, um I'll kinda kick us off here and just remind everybody. That the school improvement plan process is a fluid process. And this time of the year is the most important time of the year, because it's the only time that we can actually do something about what's happening. Um we have a few very critical months left with our students and so it's really important that we look at this information. Uh very um intently and strategically and purposefully. And try to do something to reach as many students as we can before they go on to the next school year. Um so just to kinda kick you off a little bit, I wanted to take a, a little bit of a different look, something that we haven't looked at before. Is proficiency of students in the middle of the year, cause that's where this uh information was taken. The students took the diagnostics from this data set in December. Um in the areas of ELA in math, in elementary buildings and then in the secondary buildings. So just exciting to show you um the exponential growth that you're seeing in the middle of the year. Many of these proficiency rates are what we have seen be the proficiency rate for the end of the year. And these are data points that we're seeing now here in the middle of the year, so it's exciting to see what is um coming and what we're gonna see at the end of the year. So those are our ELA trends and then the next slide is gonna show you the math trends for the elementary. Um again, everybody moving in that positive direction, something that's uh an interesting thing that we've been able to look at. Is our projected proficiency rate on the IAR, so we now have checkpoints within our curriculum that can show us. If the kids are growing at a certain rate typically, that's the percentage of kids that would demonstrate proficiency on the IAR. But if they get that stretch growth, that more rigorous growth, then it increases by, you can see on the, on the tables there. So I won't go over every single one, but just to show why we look at stretch growth and typical growth. Um it's important because it gives us an indicator of how many kids are gonna be on grade level by the end of the year, if they get that stretch growth. And then secondary ELA trends, so just looking at IMS and CHS. Again, same thing, the purple is where we're at now in the middle of the year, these are numbers that we have not seen. Um even at the end of the year in some cases, so that's pretty exciting. And then the next slide is math trends and that trend line that you can see. Um is of the high school, so um this is the highest historical proficiency rate that the high school has seen in math. Proficiency again means that's the percent of students who are showing on grade levels skills. Um on our diagnostic assessments that they're taking, so um there is the question of like what was going on in twenty twenty twenty-one, that first data point. Um that was COVID and that's when the STAR assessment was allowed to be taken at home with the help of some parents possibly. So it's just interesting to kinda see how that um laid out, so really exciting. Um this solidifies a lot of the work that these teams are doing and the principals and Eleanor are gonna go over and talk to you about. Um we're very invested in this process of identifying essential standards, tracking student skill acquisition. Meeting kids where they're at, working with them when they're not learning, um coming up with ways to remediate, extend, refine. Um this is all of the work that everybody's doing, so Eleanor's gonna talk a little bit about some of the specific things that we're doing for that work and then the building principals will briefly. Go over some celebrations for their own buildings.
So a few years ago, we got pretty tight on um having some consistent goals and targets with elementary and then consistent goals and targets. Um at the secondary level, just to provide that consistency across the board again, so that we know that all elementary students are getting a guaranteed viable curriculum. We're aiming for the same targets, um so. Um this first one, I'm not gonna go over all of the goals and targets, but I do wanna point out on this first one, um the addition of STAR early literacy. So we had shared at the beginning of the year that that is a new diagnostic tool that we are using specifically for our younger kiddos. Um it looks at pre-reading skills, so the early literacy skills, um and gives us a better idea of how students are doing with that. Um we've talked about and Julie mentioned growth, so with STAR, that's called SGP. Just as a reminder, SGP stands for Student Growth Percentile. When we're looking at STAR, our goal as a district is to have sixty-five percent of students meet that growth. So um it's different for every student, it's based on where they started the year at, which, where their academic level was at the beginning of the year. Um then STAR sets that goal for them, so with the STAR on the left side, if you see in the left table, the far right column, it says SGP Fall to Winter. Um our district-wide goal is over sixty-five percent and as you can see, everyone's well above that. With early literacy, that number is set at fifty-five percent, it's just different information that we're looking at, so again, you can see that we're at or. Like Westview well above that, which is really exciting, so just to kinda clarify that difference there. Um I'm not gonna go through all that data, cause the principals are gonna touch on that when they come up and present. But I do wanna share with you some of the things that the curriculum department is doing to support all of the goals and targets at each building. Um some things that we're doing that are consistent across the district, uh so I just got some visuals and things we've put together throughout the year so far. Um the first one, eh first two actually are um based on our quarterly instructional focuses. So last year, um we tried in the second semester, we did monthly instructional focuses, it was a little too intense. Um it was not enough time for teachers to really dive into the information, apply it in their classrooms and press to see growth. So this year, we spread it out more, um there is one instructional focus each quarter. All of the instructional focuses are research-based, um they come from highly vetted um information and uh research. So we know they work when they're done properly, so the idea behind it is as a district, K, pre-K through twelve. We're looking at, for example, this one is the first quarter, we're looking at student self-reporting of essential standards. So all of our district teams have established essential standards, the idea is students taking ownership of that learning. And students being able to tell, here's what I'm learning, here's how I'm doing with the essential standards. Um and so this was a graphic that was sent out to teachers first quarter to help support them with that, it gives the research behind why we're using it. Um talks about the effect size that students reporting on their own grades can have and on their own learning. And then it gives them resources as well, so you can see at the bottom, there's elementary examples, secondary examples, so it gives teachers the why, but also gives them the how. Clickable things that they can just go and grab and put into, into play. Um the second page is actually from this quarter's instructional focus, uh it has to do with providing meaningful feedback. So there was a separate slide deck that I sent out to teachers a couple of weeks ago with that instructional focus. This one pager is something that um we, I've shared this morning at a coffee talk at IMS, we went over the instructional focus. And so the idea behind that is quick tools that teachers can have for providing meaningful feedback, quick and easy ways that they can do that in the classroom. and do it effectively. Um, so each quarter I've gone to the buildings and talked with teachers who are willing to come and sit with me. I try to bring cookies or treats or lunch or something with. Um, and talk about what the instructional focus is for that quarter, answer questions. Um, sometimes that leads to being involved in the classrooms or um having Mike and Jess jump in and get involved with teachers too. Um, the third one is kind of an example of some ways that we're supporting um new teachers because we want them to be off on the right foot as well. Um, and so this is uh each month I've been doing a protege newsletter, so it goes out to our new teachers. And then there's also a mentor newsletter, slightly different version, but sometimes similar information in it. Um, just kind of a reminder of here's you know, here's events going on, but also here are some resources that would be um helpful this time of year. Um, trying to support new teachers in that way. Uh, we've also been doing what we call Protege PD. We've got it scheduled three times throughout the year where we're having all of our new teachers get together. Um, talking about everything from instructional focuses to do you know how to find the essential standards? Do you know what you're teaching? Do you know how your students are doing with their essential standards? Um, so just trying to provide extra support for new teachers so that they feel successful and they know where to go when they have questions. Um, Jessica Burton, one of our instructional coaches, also does a quarterly um instructional ideas or instructional uh tools that she sends out to teachers as well, that is just kind of an extra support for um helping students meet those standards. Uh, the fourth one, this is something that we've gotten a lot more involved with this year. Um, coming up with kind of protocols for teachers to look at data. A couple of weeks ago, elementary and middle school teachers looked specifically at STAR and I Ready diagnostic data from the winter. Um, we kind of Julie and I worked together to set up a protocol for them to look at the data and talk about it in a way that there's an outcome from it and we're looking at how can we improve student learning? How do we need to adjust our instructional practices? Um, so this example that you see in there was actually from uh November, the very end of November when the elementary teams met as a district. So all third grade across the district met together. Um, they were actually looking at IAR scores from last spring. This is only four of the slides. It was a whole slide deck they worked through where they looked at um what are called evidence statements. So those are the standards basically to look at what are some standards maybe we're struggling with. Or there are different types of questions on the IAR, so looking at are there types of questions that we need to review? Um, and then the last one kind of piggybacked off of that, out of that conversation about IAR. We had a lot of teachers wanting help to prepare students for IAR and you know, reviewing those types of questions. So this was actually an idea that Julie had. Um, I put together this slideshow for third and fourth grade teachers where it's just, it's a slide per week. Um, it's got extra resources on there, but it's a slide per week where they can, there's math vocabulary and ELA vocabulary. There's two math questions of different types that the and it's exactly what the students, the same format that they'll see on the test. Um, and then the same for ELA. So I made those for third and fourth and then Mike Emery ran with it for uh fifth and sixth grade. He's making a science one now and I don't know, ELA department at the high school was interested in it for ACT, so I will go down that road too, but um, so anyway, those are just some exciting ways. We'll see, Mike doesn't know that yet, but Uh, so anyway, I just wanted to share, those are some of the things we're doing district-wide to try to really keep things consistent. Um, you know, again, meeting those shared goals and targets, but all working together, trying to support teachers too. So any questions about or any of the data? Okay, then I'm gonna turn it over to Mister Valencia. Talk about high school.
I'm I'm not gonna go over the slides. I'm just gonna go over um our accomplishments that we've had so far this year and just where we're at and where we're gonna continue to grow on. First, I wa- I wanna make sure I give a shout out to our our team that uh has worked through this process for the past four and a half years. Nicole Zazada, Mel Turgeon, Alicia Boyd, Colton Downs, Chrissy Samandy, Sean Cullen, Jamie Scoonover, Tracy Raymond, Jody Neptune, Tony Melatello, and Marty Eskridge. Um, they've been the team leaders of of part of this process and I know it's, you know, throwing up a slideshow and and showing you um the positive things that are happening with our student learning, but it takes a a good group of people to make sure that that's happening. And then this this is the leadership team that's that's done that. So I wanna make sure I give them a shout out. Um, this is just a product of really commitment to our our PLC process. Um, answering the four questions a part of that PLC process of what do we want students to learn and do first? And and making sure that we have identified those essential standards. Um, and we have identified those essential standards. If you if you go through this one. Go through each pro- each part of the process, um not only uh you know, English teachers, math teachers. Every department has targets based upon the goals that are written for those two specific core subjects, English and math. Um, and then how do we, how do we know if they have learned it? Writing those common formative assessments, and I've said it in here before, and I say it all the time, is how we how we um don't have the autopsy, how we have the checkup, the checkups along the way to diagnose the problem. Uh, whether that is just an instructional, a tier one problem, you know, that whatever whatever's happening in the classroom, something needs to change. Or maybe, you know, Mister Drenzy teaches a different than Mister Valencia, so they need to go see Mister Drenzy and and get a a different perspective, a different a different teacher. Um, rather than diagnosing the problem when it's, like I said, when it's an autopsy. And part of that process we've had is through our Grit schedule. That Grit schedule, now we track data by student by standard. So if I were to go to Mrs. Anderson in the CTE wing and I say, okay, Mrs. Anderson, and your essential standards in your photography class, what is Jimmy Crack Corn? What does he have? What does he have on that? Is he master that s- specific standard in that class? And she can give and she can give me that answer. Um, so by student by standard, we're we're tracking that data. And having that data to then drive our our grit time by student by standard, okay, diagn- diagnosing what is that tier one instructional focus that we wanna be able to diagnose for those those students? Um, as uh both Eleanor and um Miss Tarvin said, we wanna close that that achievement gap by having the highest proficiency that we've ever had uh by giving the the star the STAR exam. It's the highest proficiency that we've we've ever had at at Canton High School. Um, we also asked the leadership team, just another positive with this is what what what's been some positives with our Wednesday late starts and it's min- there are many after-action reviews every Wednesday. Okay, we had, we had our week of instruction, we had the the week with our students. Wednesday is that after-action review, you know, what where do we identify the the problem or or the need? What well, what didn't, what go well, and then how are we gonna diagnose that problem? Um, and then just another positive with everything that we've gone through with this. Uh, we had a hundred and two students receiving college credit, over seven hundred seventy credit, seven hundred and seventy-seven credit hours um for Canton High School students in the first semester. And just to focus on growth opportunities, um having that grit time, that in- instructional time, the intervention time built into the day. Some of, some of it has become, some students wanna use it to try to make up homework. That's not the main purpose of it. The main purpose of it is to try to, uh like I said, diagnose where those learning gaps are. Um, and one of the underlying issues with that is our attendance rate right now and how we wanna try to address our attendance. We've been having um quarterly and bi-weekly incentives. So you know, if you have perfect attendance for two weeks, we do a drawing and Fridays, we draw ten names. You get out five minutes ear- ear- early for lunch. Um, you know, just bi-weekly incentives like that. Right now, we're gonna give away TV for the third quarter. Um, um, ne- next quarter, we're gonna give away PlayStation five for students that don't have any unexcused abs- absences. So things to try to incentivize app uh attendance at that Canton High School. We've also went through Mister Duckums, our SROs and Mister Gersons have done fifty-nine home visits this school year um so far. And just the continual parent problem solving means that we have on a weekly basis to try to get students to come to school. It is definitely a post, I won't say COVID, it is a post-two thousand twenty uh issue across the nation, a- attendance in schools. And how how we try to, how we try to address that as best possible. Because if they're not there, that proficiency, that achievement gap just widens and those gaps widen and we wanna make sure we're still closing those gaps. Any questions on anything? Thank you.
Alright, um. Oh, it's not a tapper. That's no problem. You want me to get there for you while you're talking?
Well, Jay went rogue and I feel like I should have to go. Alright, um, so kind of a lot of what what Jay said is when you look at our slides, you're gonna see the header is ELA and the header is math. But what a lot of people don't know is it's cross-curriculum. So our art teachers, our PE teachers, everyone's doing, you know, races in their class and they're working on math strategies, they're working on writing strategies. So you know, everybody sees ELA and everyone's like, oh, ELA is doing awesome. But they're doing awesome because they also have support in other classes. So I wanna make sure that everyone's recognized from the building because everyone at Angersall, um you know, after two and a half years, I really feel like everyone's pulling in the same direction and because everyone's pulling in the same direction, you're gonna see some of the uh numbers in the data that we're seeing now and and it's really exciting. Everybody's really excited about it. And it's something that, you know, we're we're all in the kind of the doldrums of winter and it's something that they're in a way, kind of getting excited for IAR this week or this school year because they wanna see the progress from all of the uh all the work that they've been putting in. So some of the things that I wanna highlight, if you see at the top of the slide, our ELA goal um overall for the school year is to increase our students from thirty-two to forty percent on our benchmark, on our sty- STAR diagnostic. We have taught half of our curriculum this year. We've not gone over everything, obviously, because we're still only in February. When we took this, it was, let's see, ELA was before Christmas break. So our goal was to increase to forty percent. We're currently sitting at uh thirty-nine point one percent. Um, one of our other things is we are looking at seventy-five percent of our IMS ELA students achieving their SGP. We are currently at seventy-nine, seventy-five point nine percent of that goal, going through half of the material. So everyone's kind of getting really excited. They're looking at our essential standards, they're seeing how far we can go and then how much further we can push them once they start learning those essential standards. Thanks, Eleanor. Uh, on our next one, uh go back, yeah, right there, so I'm sorry. On this one, um we are talking about, one thing that we really wanted to highlight was when we did our STAR this year, we decided to set a really high goal. We decided to make the target for students their moderately ambitious goal, which is a pretty high mark for our students. So any student that achieved their personal moderately ambitious goal, or if they were already in the green, which means green, they're already at a really high level and they maintain being in the green, um they would earn an incentive. So when you see on that middle under progress, second um second block there, when you look at the percentage, one thing that our teachers highlighted last week, because I have our teachers present this to their peers, so they presented our faculty meeting. One thing they were super proud of is when they presented this, they highlighted that our percentage of students, though you see thirty-seven, forty-nine, um, fifth grade is, they wanted me to tell you, they emailed me, they are at fifty-five percent. They just had a lot of sickness, so they didn't have it in in time. Um, fifty-five percent, when you see that, that's of their moderately ambitious goal. That's not at their growth. So in the parentheses, you see halfway through the year, we have sixty-five, seventy-seven, um sixty-four percent and for eight, for fifth grade, eighty-four percent of our students showing growth overall. So overall, we have a significant portion of our students showing growth. That first number, percentage number, they're extremely proud of because that's getting them to their moderately ambitious goal. And we have a couple of kids pretty salty because next week we're getting Kona Ice and they missed it by like two points and they're trying to sandbag me and get them to get them Kona Ice. And I'm like, nope, uh maybe, maybe next instead of, so um it's, you know, a little friendly competition for academics is it's nice to see. Um, for our math, for our math, I skipped ahead one, sorry. For our math, what we really wanted to highlight for you guys is at the top there, you can see that we are looking to increase from sixteen to thirty-five percent of students at or above grade level. Again, halfway through the semester, we are sitting at thirty-two percent. So they still have the second half of the semester to keep pushing our students and we've made some significant growth. Um, one thing that we're proud of is we've done this I Ready incentive for the last three years that I've been here. Um, fifth grade is still tracking it because fifth grade, they come into the building, it's new to them. We've established that I Ready is now part of the Angersall culture. Kids know they get on it, it's what they do, it's what they do when they have free time, it's it's how they grow, it's stuff that they can monitor on their own. And it's set at their ability, so it's not just on grade level, it's it's where they're at to kind of help fill those gaps. Um, since it's become the expected culture, what we wanted to do is just look at our fifth grade. And you can see that we have eighty percent of IMS fifth grade students passing one lesson and I Ready at eighty percent or better per week. Um, and we didn't even put sixth, seventh, and eighth grade as a goal because, like I said, that's culture, it's expected now. Um, when we're looking at the next block, our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade decided to transition from I Ready to CFA tracking. So those are common formative assessments, assessments that all teachers use across the curriculum to see how every class is doing, so they're using the same assessment to check the same content. Um, and they didn't really know where to start their tracking number because they'd never really used it as an assessment overall, grade-wide. So they decided to start it at sixty percent and they're like, ah, we don't know, we'll ju- um, let's just, let's just see what it's at. Um, and they were very pleased when they were looking at their data. Um, and it was much higher, so they're gonna push a li- a lot harder next year. Um, they were really happy to see that they've got eighty-six, eighty-eight, eighty-two percent. Fifth grade set theirs at seventy percent. Um, just of students getting that on their CFAs. So when we look at our SEL goal, um we decided to implement, it's called Little Giant PowerPoints. Um, we didn't just want to, this is a PBIS model, we didn't wanna just track student negatives. We also wanted to encourage them to start giving back to the school. So I call it the classified board. Um, it's outside the library, teachers can post jobs around the building that they need help with. Students can take their classified ad, take it to the classroom and they can work to earn earn additional powerpoints. So this recognizes students that are doing extra around the building. This also encourages our students to get in the classrooms, to start helping out, cleaning up a little bit, um helping us out. But it's also, we're using it to track, obviously, negative behaviors as well. Um, what we really wanted to focus on is when those students do those negative behaviors, the restorative component. So when a student is assigned detention, they can earn points back from what they lost by talking about it, recognizing what they did, how they can react and do things differently, so they can earn a half a point back or a point back depending on how many they lost. Um, and this turns our just simple detentions of sitting there staring at a wall into discussion and you know, for thirteen, fourteen, twelve-year-olds, ten-year-olds who made a mistake discussing how they could have acted and reacted differently. Because I'm not sure if you're aware, in the uh middle school, it's very impulsive behavior. So we're trying to get them to reflect on that impulsiveness and to learn to make better decisions. So when we pass them along to Jay, hopefully, hopefully they do a little bit better. Um, so our goal for this was to have this a hundred percent created on paper by Christmas. It was, and we are in our sixth week of it. Um, and on our fifth week, we saw our highest number of students that uh kind of had infractions and had a reduction, that was at three point five percent. When they started seeing the PowerPoints go out in the cafeteria, it automatically went down to a point one six percent for the next week. So we are seeing some really good things. We have forty-nine percent of our students that have earned extra points by helping out in the building, just doing things for teachers. Um, and it's it's a variety of things, helping to clean, organize, make copies, organize, whatever. So um it's giving back, it's learning how to change behavior and it's something that hopefully um we just keep evolving over the next couple of years and it becomes again, like I said, part of our culture. So that is ours.
Alright. So I went through um our mid-year data review and I picked a highlight from ELA, from math and from SEL just to kind of celebrate. Uh, first of all, I'd like to celebrate within ELA. We had a target of seventy-five percent of our students uh first through fourth grade will demonstrate typical or above growth as measured by the STAR SGP report. We're at seventy-four percent mid-year and so we've almost met that target. Um, we also wanna celebrate um the increase at all grade levels of students meeting or exceeding grade level expectations for ELA. And that's measured by our um BASS, our reading um or comprehension interviews and through STAR, so it's huge. In math, twenty-nine percent of our students have achieved their anticipated end-of-the-year typical growth and thirteen percent have met their stretch growth. So those numbers are huge. To go back to what Eleanor and Julie spoke about, um thirteen percent of the students meeting their stretch growth mid-year is pretty amazing. thirteen percent of the students meeting their stretch growth mid-year is pretty amazing. That means that these students are going above and beyond, and that str- stretch growth is essential for our students to close that gap. Without them achieving that stretch growth, we're not gonna have more students that show proficiency on the benchmark assessment. And with SEL, all K-four staff is implementing the SEL Scope and Sequence, and we're utilizing the Sabers data to identify students at risk in academics and social emotional wellbeing. We're also able to use the data to gauge our understanding of our students. So, our students take, uh, the Sabers, it's kinda like a checklist where they rate themselves on how they feel about their academic performance, how they feel socially. Um, but then the teacher also has the ability to go back in and look at the Sabers, and they rate the student. And then they can compare those two scores to see if they truly understand and know their students. And if not, how, what do we need to do to know our students better? Or maybe there was a misunderstanding with the questions, but really, it's about getting to know the kids and making sure that they have the supports in place so they can be successful. And without their SEL needs being met, they cannot be successful in math and ELA. So we really are using that data, so, that's all, thank you.
Um, so, this is a huge celebration, um, for us. So our proficiency, uh, we're showing, or we, our goal was by the end of the year that thirty-eight percent of our students would demonstrate at or above grade level. And our students are at forty-two point eight percent. And as you can see, that's the highest that they've been over, I don't know, ever, or several, but at least for several years, right? Um, and I'm really proud of this for a lot of reasons. Our staff puts so much work into everything they do, but more than half of our teams have first and second-year teachers on them. So we have a young, uh, we have a, a, a new staff, right? So that speaks to not only the hard work that they're putting in, but also the veteran teachers that are on there that are helping guide them through this process. So, I really think that this speaks to the hard work and the dedication that they put into this. Um, and, uh, I'm super proud, super proud of them. Um, we have another, um, good EL, uh, yeah, bleh, can't even talk, guys, late. ELA, um, report is that we are saying, by the end of the year, ninety percent of our students will show growth, according to our BASS. Um, Kylie spoke to that as well, eighty-three percent are meeting that right now, and we're not at the end of the year. So that is also a really, um, awesome milestone. For our math, big thing from our math is, we're looking by the end of the year to have ten percent or less of our students who are two or more grade levels behind. Right now, mid-year, we're at eleven percent. So, we're right on track to be at that ten percent or, um, hopefully even less than that by the end of the school year. And then lastly, our SEL, um, this year, um, we have focused on handling some of our tier-two behaviors, so behaviors in the building that need just a little bit extra, more targeted strategies. And again, having a, a new sta- newer staff, that can be a challenge, right? Um, we've had Kate Mallory, the, um, SEL coach from the ROE, come in, do observations, um, in the classrooms, and give helpful feedback to our teachers. Um, and both veteran teachers and the new teachers have found a lot of benefit in that. Um, so it's helped in that regard to, um, give them de-escalation strategies, which is part of our focus, um, and also restorative practices to help with, um, the little kids. So, overall, I think amazing things are happening. We also, um, just, which I didn't mention in our good news, but, um, two of my second-year teachers and one who's a third year, um, we helped write a grant, and we did get two thousand dollars from the Sunshine Foundation to go towards our PBIS incentives, um, where we reached out to Jordan, we're gonna be doing some inflatables third quarter, so we're really excited about that. Um, so we're looking to use that money to further just expand the SEL culture in our building and get everybody so that they continue to do the growth that they're doing. Thank you.
So, we have lots of celebrations at Westview. Um, our ELA goal is for fifty percent of students to demonstrate that at or above grade level, and right now, we're currently at forty-two point two percent. And when we move to the next slide in a minute, you'll see that chart, and, um, you'll see a lot of growth within the last few years, um, and just that amazing progress from even fall to winter in ELA. Um, as you can see there, at the end, um, at the top, that's our overall, with it being the, um, forty-two percent. Um, our targets, we wanted, we want seventy percent of students in grades first through fourth to demonstrate, um, the typical or above growth, and we're currently at seventy-one point six percent for STAR, and eighty point four percent for the STAR Early Literacy. Um, lots of different things happening in the building, uh, with ELA specifically, success. Um, we had a change in our success dynamics that I encouraged kindergarten, second, third, and fourth-grade teachers to collaborate together and, um, implement those changes before Christmas. So even with that implementation and the changes that they've made, we've had this amazing growth, um, in ELA. First grade, they were already doing success the way that we were, um, transitioning into, so, uh, that's why I didn't enlist them. But we have implemented a Sipping on Sweet Success incentive for students taking STAR and I-Ready. Um, so, basically, similar to the Crusher Goal at the end of the year that we did last year. Um, the students that met their, um, growth goals for one assessment got a, uh, keychain, and then students that met on both assessments got a keychain, and then they got to come drink hot cocoa with me. And, um, they really enjoyed that, and it pushed the students to try really hard on their assessments. Um, so we'll move on to math. Our math goal is sixty percent of students will demonstrate at or above grade level, and right now, we're at thirty-three percent of students demonstrating that. Um, changes with implementing the math tier-two and really diving into that this year for each grade level. Um, and with the Sipping on Sweet Success Winter Goal incentive, we, um, did that for the math I-Ready Diagnostic. Teachers are implementing math fact programs, Reflex, Bottle, um, and really targeting that tier-two and tier-three math times for the students to try to increase, um, the growth that we've had here. Uh, another, at the end, eighty percent of K-through stu-, K-through four students will demonstrate mastery of essential standards, and if first grade has met that, third grade's met it, and the other grade levels are right on target. So just continuing to follow that scope and sequence and in using the Ready Math for Instruction and continuing with tier-two and tier-three math groups. Um, we have done self-reporting, so that was one of the instructional practices that they've done, um, that Eleanor had talked about. So self-reporting for math and ELA. Um, in K-through four, each student has their own folder, and they track that essential standards, um, mastery for each of their grade levels. And then teachers have also put STAR, um, scores in there for students to be able to keep track of that, and also the I-Ready Diagnostic, so. And some are doing, like, counting to one hundred for kindergarten, and their math facts for, like, uh, first grade and second grade. Our SEL goal is to have worked with Kate Mallory to create a behavioral framework for addressing the tier-two behaviors and helping support the teachers and knowing what kind of interventions to use. And we are currently, um, we've met with Kate Mallory. She has given us lots of different resources, and right now, our team is in the process of trying to create that framework for our building. And then we plan to meet with Kate Mallory again to kinda go over what we've created as a team and, um, see if she could give us more suggestions, um, for that. Targets, hundred percent of students will do the Sabers Assessment, and we have met that. For Know Me, Know My Name, the, um, mentors have been assigned. We have lots of teachers and staff that are supporting those students. Some are eating lunch with them, um, just catching up with them in the hallway or going to their class and checking in on them. And with that Sabers data and the Know Me, Know My Name, we've really dove into that and kind of seen a correlation between the students that we have assigned a mentor and the ones that, um, were at risk on the Sabers. So, lots of celebrations at Westview, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Future agenda items, does anybody want anything on the agenda for the future? No? Okay. At eight-thirty, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So, second.
Oh, thanks, first and second. Please stall the hall.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ingersoll.
Yes.
Yeah, that's my wife.
Tara.
Good job.
Good luck, good job.
On my way home.
I drive my mother.
Alright, we are live.
Okay. Yeah, I will entertain a motion out nine twenty five to exit the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Third.
Call the roll.
Alright. Ben Bishop.
Yeah.
Ann Grusnich.
Yes.
Jane Lewis.
Yeah.
Brent Perry.
Yes.
Jordan Stanley.
Yes.
And I wanted to be recorded that Jordan took third.
Thank you very much everyone.
I was very proud.